Now you did.
Okay.
Okay.
Motion to open, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. All right. Board and committee reports, I don't think we have anything. No. I was talking to Martha today, but no updates from them. We have no citizens' concerns this evening, no public hearings. Town administrators' report.
I only have one issue to share with you. Jody Vining emailed to say that after exploring all options, it appears that no off-road parking alternative for the Clipper City Trail on Parker Street is going to be viable. So the drawings will be submitted with no formal parking designated for the trail on or around Parker Street.
Tracy, do you know what happened to the town-owned piece of property that was part of the exploration that did not work either?
Apparently it didn't. There's no specific reference to that piece. Martha was gonna give you a briefing on it, but she got called away unexpectedly, so...
Nothing bad, eh?
Here he is. All right. So far, David, you've missed nothing.
(laughing).
Tracy, we had Tracy's report and there was nothing in it other than Jody Vining found no alternative parking over in Parker Street.
Okay.
Okay. All right, that's it?
That's it.
Okay. New business. Reorganization of the board. Does anyone have any ideas?
Motion to retain the same.
Second.
Good. Any other discussion? Okay. I guess, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. We, next week, next meeting, I'd like to talk about people's responsibilities in different areas and stuff, so that we can approach it as a team. Okay? That's all. Appointments on recommendation of Concom. Les Jones and Jim Cunningham for reappointment to the Concom for three years. Two...
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Appointments on recommendation of the Agricultural Committee to reappoint Catherine O'Brien, Matthew Kozaki, and John Nutile, who's the alternate, for three years through June 16.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We haven't got, we need to acknowledge the receipt of Comcast PEG Access Support Payment in the amount of $26,492.90 for the period January through March 2013. Okay? Just, we've got it, that's it.
You want to move to accept?
I don't think we have to, no. I mean, they sent it to the town, the town is probably already in the bank.
It is.
Right.
And that leads right into Media Committee. David?
Okay. Media Committee is interested in the idea of mounting a flat panel TV screen somewhere in Town Hall, perhaps on that back wall, over here maybe. But anyway, the idea would be to, still kind of discussing the detail with various people in Town Hall, the original idea was that we would just broadcast what we're sending out over the Newbury Channel right now, but then folks had some other ideas, including, you know, slideshows of Newbury and sort of community calendars, some of that sort of thing, so a bit, we wanted to get your feedback on the idea, and of course, we would pay for it with our funding from Comcast, so it wouldn't cost taxpayers anything.
Since you sent that to us, I was thinking, and I would like to see if we could get one over at the library also. You know, people gather there in the area where they read the newspapers and stuff, and, you know, something to think about, go back to your committee on.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, would anyone have anything else, but...
Can we use that flat screen to project things, like when we have the public hearings and things like this?
I mean, just talk about regular television.
Yeah, we weren't thinking of something huge.
Enormous, okay.
We already talked about hanging a screen here, we have the screen.
All right.
Hanging a screen here for presentations for the various boards.
Okay.
And we have the projector and stuff.
Would it be better on the side wall as opposed to the real one?
I think that was where CM had recommended, and we actually thought it would also be helpful during the storms, when we're all having our meetings here, to be able to see some of the coverage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna have to work out a little, depending on exactly what we want to show on it, we'll have to spend a little time thinking of, you know, sort of the technical details, but I think you've figured out by now, we've got a pretty good crew when it comes to the technical side of things.
Tremendous.
You know, Sam helps us with wiring and issues like that, so I...
They did a, they did a great job. You talk about the crew. There's a concert going on over Newbury Elementary tonight, and they were looking for things that they can put in, you know, to keep scrolling through and whatever. I call it filler, but that takes, that's not very respectful of it.
No.
There's a better term. And they actually went over and talked to the school, but those kids, a lot of those kids don't have permission to be on television. Okay? And otherwise, that would've been a great thing, and, you know, parents and all the kids would love to see them on there, so something that they...
We're still trying to work out all of those details.
Yeah.
I don't know, do we have our extra insurance yet or not?
The insurance has been bound.
Okay, okay, good.
But those are good things, and, you know, like I say, the first time you do something, you're looking, they did a great job looking into it and found out what they needed to do, so...
Yeah, I mean, what we've been doing up till now, because of insurance and copyright issues and stuff, we've been just either broadcasting stuff that we get from other sources that we know is okay, or our own stuff, but going forward, we want to bring in, there's been a lot of interesting videos done by various people over the years and so forth, and so over time, you know, we'll be able to put a lot more material of community interest, you know, up on the channel.
You know, while we're on the subject, we may want to do it here in Town Hall if it's at all possible, but those projectors that we bought, that were donated a while back, they have them in the fire stations now, and I can't tell you how good it is. They use them for training, and you push a button and the screen comes down, and they can show anything on there from the computer. You know, they can, you know, transport other programs on there, and it's just a good thing, and I don't know if we can, if there's any available, maybe we want to figure, could put one in here.
Yeah, I mean, we have a good projector here.
Yep, we have a projector, and the Media Committee is talking about doing the screens for us, so...
And it really, it really works.
I think going forward, we're gonna have to do something a little better, I think, for town meeting. The screen we've been using and the placement hasn't been real good.
Right.
If you've got a small audience and people are willing to sit up front, which they usually aren't, it's okay, but if we have a big turnout, it's, or as we saw, even with a small turnout at the last meeting, everybody sat, there were people up in their bleachers, even though there was empty rows in between, so...
We have half of it, Dave, we have a small audience, but they don't want to...
I think the audio system worked a lot better than what we've had in the past. We are having a little, a few technical issues still in terms of recording the audio for the TV part of it.
Yeah.
But I think the equipment that we bought is, and it's portable, we can use it anywhere in town, so it's a step forward. So, you know, like when we had the meeting, that meeting about Plum Island over in the Fire Hall here, the acoustics were terrible, and I think, you know, with this new system, we'll be able to do a lot better for those kinds of venues.
Good. Now, the flat screen is gonna be dedicated to the cable station, are we gonna be, is it gonna be able to pick up, like, Channel 5?
It's gonna be a regular TV.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's just a question...
Hook up to the cable station.
That's the sort of technical stuff, is that we'll have to get a cable hookup, we'll have to hook up to our equipment and, depending on what people want to use it for, but, and again...
Tracy's gonna control the remote. (laughing). Yeah, no watching football games, you know, soap opera.
We may want to turn it off during selectman's meetings, especially if the Bruins are in the playing, so... Okay, so we'll go ahead and, again, we'll stay in touch with everybody and...
All right, good idea. All right. Appointments on recommendation of the Media Committee. David Mountain, Alicia Greco, Richard Hendrickson, Mario Carnaval, Paul Dorbitz, for reappointment for FY14.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Okay. This, these are one-year appointments, I assume?
Well, no, we, that's something, it occurred to me after Paul sent the letter, that we ought to think a little bit, because it's, it's kind of happened, you know...
It's evolving.
Sort of evolving, and, you know, most of our other boards, we have like three-year terms or something like that, and maybe we should do that for this...
You know, it might be a good idea, is somehow we set it up so they stagger.
That's what I'm, yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
You know, so, do you want to pick, to start out with, pick half of them, make them two-year appointments?
Yeah, I mean, it's up to the pleasure of the board, as far as I'm concerned.
What do you think?
Nice, yeah.
Okay.
Whatever your pleasure is.
Pick someone for a two-year appointment.
I would certainly pick Richard Hendrickson for the...
Hendrickson.
Yeah, Richard and...
Hendrickson.
And you, David, okay.
Meaning that the others would be a one-year...
One year, yeah, and so then next year, we do the same thing, and then we, you know, we don't lose the whole committee if something goes awry. All right, all in favor of David and Richard for the two years and the rest of them for one year?
Aye.
Okay.
Guess I'll abstain.
All right, passed, all set. One-day liquor license by Field Newbury Little League for a function at the Spencer Pierce Little Farm, June 9th, from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Kathy, everything in order?
It is, and there's a gentleman here representing them.
Okay, that's right.
Oh, all right. Hi, I'm Tim Perry, I'm president of the Little League, and, you know, thank you for, well, first of all, the board sent me here tonight to just say thanks for everything that you guys have done for us this year and in years past. We, you make all the fields available to us, you know, approve the usage of that, and the Fire Department, the Police Department come out for opening day and do a big parade for us, and everybody loves it, and everything's gone great. So at the end of the year, on June 9th, we do our closing day, what we call Closing Day festivities, it's over at Spencer Pierce, and they have the old town, old-time baseball people there giving clinics, and they work with this Mercury Brewing Company that has done events over at Spencer Pierce in the past and has been approved by the Selectmen, so they were gonna be there, so they asked us to get the permit, and so that's why we're here tonight.
Okay, good. I got a question. How many kids are involved in your Little League program?
I think it's, it fluctuates from about 195 to 210 to 215.
Goodness gracious.
200, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so that...
Great.
Yeah, it's been great. We've actually grown, especially at the younger ages, we had eight T-ball teams this year, which in the past, we usually have four to five.
Yeah.
So have increased, but I don't know if there's an increase in the number of people in the town at all, or whatever, but, yeah, just over the last couple of years, it's increased.
You don't think it makes a big difference for you? The fact that the younger kids, the visibility, they see them over here.
Yeah.
Okay, out in the open, and I think that might help, you know, because it gets, you know, talking about it and whatever.
Yeah, we use it so much now, because we only have the major leagues at Pearson, which is down near the library, and then all the others really play at Upper Green, because it's the only field now that's the dimensions for the lower-level kids, so it's almost every night there's somebody...
Yeah.
Out there, you know, so I think you're right, I think people see it, it's very visible.
I don't think that, you know, I'll just digress a little bit, but I don't think that a lot of the people know the extent that the town facilities are involved with some of these youth activities, and I was, I went over to the, and drove through the Open Lacrosse Tournament over at the Manta Fields...
Yeah.
This weekend, and I drove down, and I was just amazed at the number of cars, and so on the way out, I started counting them, and we had over 500 cars over there, you know, vehicles, and the fields were, all the fields they were playing on, the people waiting to play, it was, you know, tremendous thing, and those, those are all kids that are supervised and, you know, working in a good direction.
Yeah, yeah, well, I'll tell you what, we recognize it, we recognize the fact that late here at Upper Green, it's maintained, and then Triton has been great to us, too. They double A, what we call the second-grade league, played over at Triton. Chris Walsh over there helps us with that, but we maintain Pearson.
Yeah.
We do all the groundskeeping, but other than that, the town is really helping us with everything. We appreciate it.
No, we appreciate what you're doing with the kids.
Thanks much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We've got a motion and second, right?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Tim.
I'll give you the license if you want to wait for a minute, and I'll have them sign it. We're here, so...
Thank you, guys.
You people do a wonderful job taking care of that field over there, Tom. This one's tough.
That's all you get.
That's it?
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
All right. I, we have gone here next thing, the Pearson Fields Conservation Restriction Acquisition Celebration, and there was some confusion over it, and it really wasn't something that was sanctioned by the Green Belt, but I believe that the Green Belt and Joan Purton have straightened it out, okay, so I think that...
Have they?
I think it's all set, yeah. Okay, what happened is Joan did it for the, as a fundraiser for the Green Belt, this and that, and they didn't know anything about it, and I think that they, it's between them.
I was just gonna say, for folks that have never had a chance to go inside the snuff mill, it's a real opportunity, because all the original machinery is still in there.
Well, the people that own the snuff mill hadn't, didn't know anything about it either.
Oh, really?
Yeah. That's what I was told, so anyway...
Well, I don't know, I mean, Johnny's usually in pretty close contact with John Paul Beck, so that part surprises me. He's also very proud of that mill and has done a great job of taking care of it.
And people should take advantage of that local history stuff, you're right. All right. Did everyone, the minutes of the May 14th meeting, Kathy, those ones you sent through electronically? Okay, people have a chance to look at them?
Yep.
Any corrections, additions, deletions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Notice of public hearing on cable television rates. Read and file, so if you just look at it, there's, I don't think there's much we can do about it.
Okay.
Read it and agree with it or don't agree with it, but it gives, gets filed.
Well, these public hearings, so, I mean, if enough people have an issue with something, it can make a difference, in other words, that this is a public hearing to set the rates.
Yeah.
And obviously, it affects most folks in town, since most of us use...
But again, it's through, they have to go to Boston, whatever.
Yeah, that's the downside of this stuff.
The date.
What is, the date is gonna be 10:00 a.m. on Wednesday, October 16th. Okay? Maybe that's something we could put on our website?
At where, it's at?
It's at Washington Street, Boston.
1,000 Washington Street, yeah.
1,000, that's it. Okay? I believe... No, I went into the State House on another hearing, so I wasn't there. And we have a letter of thanks from Dick Cummings for the support of the Triton budget in here, and basically, it's to thank us for supporting it. Please accept this note as my personal thank you to you, you, the Honorable Newbury Selectmen, all of the town of Newbury employees and businesses, as well as the residents of Newbury for voting to approve, you know, FY 2014 operating budget contained in Article 3 on your town warrant on May 21st, 2013. This Newbury warrant article includes a Triton Regional School budget, a district budget, which will allow the Triton Regional School District to continue its mission to provide a quality education to the children of the town of Newbury in the coming year, so... That's that. Do you have any warrants?
I do.
We have warrants. Has anyone been to any meetings that we need to know about, or anything reports for the rest of the board?
I'd just like to hear what happened with the DEP site visit on Plum Island, the building of the...
Have they written that up yet? I don't...
No.
They haven't written it up.
I haven't reported on that yet.
The original thing that came through is, they sent through some comments to Harry Trout on his, and he's looking at him right now to see if he agrees with him or not. They were type of things that are a little bit out of the ordinary, deed restrictions and stuff like that. He had put in a request to build a much smaller, I don't know, but significantly smaller house on it, elevated and pilings. He's taken out his bulkhead, which they wanted, and I think he's...
If he didn't take it out, I think the ocean was about to, wasn't it?
Well, it was, but I mean, it's removed now, yep. So anyway, he feels that by making it smaller, he's doing the recommendations they made, I think he's even putting in to move it closer to the street, okay?
Okay.
And so, you know, and they want some additional things, so it's up for them to work that out.
Okay, good. So speaking of such things, where do we stand with the FEMA grant applications?
They're moving forward. We had a meeting last week for follow-up. The chief, Martha Taylor, and Doug Packer went to a training session, so they, you know, basically learned how to apply and have a better understanding of the likelihood of receiving the grant awards, but it's moving forward. I think the deadline is the end of August. Does that sound right? The end of August.
Was it gonna be, what, six or seven?
I think there are four that have expressed interest to date, but there are still opportunities for others to come forward.
So there's, people are still considering?
Yes, yes.
And would these be, how many, would these be buyout or rebuilding, or...
There's some of each.
Okay.
I think there were two acquisitions, but they can change their proposals. Up until, actually, the award is made and accepted, they can change their minds.
There's that flexibility, okay, that's good.
It goes through. They, they put in their applications to the town, and Mike is the liaison of the pivot man on them.
Right.
He looks through them, if they appear good to him, they go to MEMA. MEMA processes them and then presents them to FEMA, and then FEMA approves them or doesn't approve them, and it's not until FEMA does that final approval that the people lock in. So, it's a...
It's a long drawn-out process.
It's very lengthy.
Well, it's good that we're at least getting experience, even if we're probably gonna be fairly low on the priority list, so...
There's a total of...
A little over $3 million?
Yeah, in that range, $3 million for the entire Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Yeah, I know, it's not a business.
Okay, and it may be, I'll say three, and we'll leave that as a rough, rough guess, because it might be four-something, but it's not much, when you split it over the whole Commonwealth. All right.
That it?
I've got one thing, which I forgot what it was. Oh, I went, remember a town meeting, we sent in a petition for Jack Van Loon relocating his building down Plumbush, and I got a call, and the Senator Ta's office requested me to go in and just explain to them that the town was behind it, they passed a town meeting, and they went through the, what was gonna be done with it and all that, and there was only one question from the people, it was a joint committee, House and Senate, and there was only one question, and they wanted to know how close the vote was at town meeting. And my reply was, you know, I want to say unanimous, but in Newbury, not much is unanimous. There's, I said, there's probably one or two people that voted against it, I said, I can't remember, and they kind of all laughed and said, no, that's what you have to expect in a democracy, so that was the only question that was...
Well, the annual town meeting, we came pretty close to unanimous, so...
Yeah, so anyway, but that was it, and it's at, it's going into committee from this, these people make a recommendation, so that's it.
So do you think it'll actually make it to the floor before the end of the session?
Probably won't.
There's been a problem with these things.
If it goes this far, it should.
Yeah.
The other thing that's quite interesting is that, whole rest of the afternoon, of the afternoon that I was there, they talked about changes for statewide zoning regulations, and it's pretty interesting. The changes that got proposed has backing from everyone from the Conservation Law Foundation, Greenpeace, Trustees Reservations, to different builders' associations, planners' associations, city solicitors across the state, and what they want to do is they figure that, they feel that our zoning is very, I don't want to say it, it's not very conducive to moving forward, they say, we have, we have to be...
You talk about the state, not our zoning personally, in Newbury, but rather the state enabling legislation, which is, you know, having spent quite a few years on the planning board, I can say, it's arcane at best.
Honestly, I've had a couple of glances of chapter 40s, and I'm not happy with the state doing that.
They use, they use like examples of Newbury and Bloxford as being very inefficient. They don't like one-acre and two-acre...
Right.
Lots, okay, and they don't like A&amp;Rs, because they want to make it really easy, instead of putting one house in an A&amp;R, put two or three in, okay? Because they, they had these statistics on, we need so many more units before the year 2020, and we're not gonna get there unless we change it, so anyway, but that's in here.
Joe, is that something that the town has to vote in, or they're gonna jam that down our throats, too?
No, no, it's, this is enabling, they call it enabling legislation, and then we can, you know...
Adopt it.
It'll probably, probably the only thing at the local level that would affect would be the A&amp;Rs, which are kind of a pain anyway, just having been involved in administering that stuff, you know, and I think probably at our level, that's probably gonna be the major thing, short-term that we would see, and it's, going forward, it should give us more flexibility.
Now, if, you know, thinking back real quickly, because for being on the planning board myself for so many years, I mean, A&amp;Rs were A&amp;Rs, but they certainly allowed some simplicity for people to do some things. You know, and it's just the way of the world, if something works, why not put another overlay on it or take it away? And, you know, I just felt before we went any further, I mean, I looked at some of the A&amp;Rs we did, I mean, people left out a stone wall, I didn't get a number right, but it certainly allowed people to do some things without extensive engineering and on and on and on and on, but I mean, you know, be it as it may, that'll probably disappear.
It's my understanding, and I haven't read this stuff, the legislation in any detail, but that it's, going forward, I think it's gonna allow more flexibility, it's not gonna be like folks can't create single lots like they did under the NR process, but, you know, one of the things, I mean, I don't know of any state in the country actually that has something quite like our NR process, it's, and remember how we used to get into these issues of, well, you know, we know it's not a public road, but is it a traveled private way or that kind of stuff, and we'd get lawyers on both sides of the issue, making sort of equally learned arguments, shall I say, for their clients, and I think going forward, it's probably gonna get a little simpler.
But how is adding more regulation or trying to streamline that process actually gonna take away the fact of the travel?
As I understand it, again, I haven't read it, it's not adding more regulation, it's actually just bringing it, the current legislation, sort of rewriting it to be more in line with what's the national norms as opposed to, you know, we've had some of which, you and I often talk about the origins of some of our laws, and they go back to English common law back in 1635, when the town was founded or something, I don't know.
It's just, it's just on the A&amp;R, for some, in some ways, they worked pretty well, and probably the next layer of the way they do things, I've never seen it get easier. I'd be really curious to see how they, in this state of Massachusetts, make it easier. They're not trying to make it easier, what they're trying to do is get more, squeeze more lots out of it. Well, so they're gonna relax some sort of regulation or standard? Maybe, maybe a minor subdivision, I think.
Minor, you know, multiple agenda items, but I think...
Yeah.
Minor, you know, multiple agenda items, but I think, because originally, there were like two competing proposals, you know, if you go back a couple of years, and then, you know, the different groups, you know, the environmental groups on one side, the developers on the other side, and the planners kind of in the middle, seemed to have somehow taken the best of both of these things and brought them together and so.
Well, can you remember when we went into the open space residential subdivision, before that really occurred, we were thinking of doing some different standards for small subdivisions, and I mean, if people don't want to build an open space residential subdivision, if there were an easier way to produce a one or two-house subdivision, that might be interesting.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think Joe, Joe was at the hearing, but I think that was one of the goals of this.
The other thing that they, the goal is is making it easier to redevelop, they call them infill, yeah, infill lots, okay, because as they said, they look at that as a waste of space, all right, especially, and it's not, we hear of infill lots in Newbury Port and stuff like that, but they're talking about in the cities where they've got half blocks of stuff, okay, and, you know, they're, they're looking to make more housing, that's what their purpose is, so anyway, all right, people, how many people are gonna be available for the Triton graduation?
I'll try, I probably will. You were there last year.
I already have plans.
All right, so, it looks like, like Mike, myself, and probably me.
I'm sure the maybe.
A maybe, okay. Well, why don't we say four?
Say four.
Okay.
You guys have the invitations, I do not.
All right, I'll call, I'll call.
What time is it, Joe, did you open it?
It's eleven.
Ten o'clock, is it eleven?
Eleven.
It seems like everything has happened in that day, is, is that Byfield Day?
That's Byfield Days, it's the Pearson Field Celebration, that's what I'm saying.
This is Sunday, isn't it?
No, it's Saturday.
Saturday, okay, yeah.
Yeah, it is eleven.
Yeah.
And it's also Friday and Sunday, I believe, and some, we have to do the other kind of graves on Saturday, yeah, everything's happening that one day.
That's not fair.
Okay, all right.
Motion to adjourn?
Yep. Anyone else want?
Uh, what, second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Toughest vote of the evening.